All right, we are back from lunch and we're back in open hearing. And we have code, Building Department, code enforcement.
Chair, I would like to make a report in that I was gone this morning. I had an hour and a half meeting and I listened to the meeting as I was going down. Kevin was driving and I put on pause, went to the meeting. After the meeting, I finished out on the way back here. So, I'm aware of what was going on during the meeting.
You're up to date to where we are?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Except for I missed up when Sam had all that extra money. He was taking us to lunch or something. Is that the part? I missed that part.
Do you miss lunch? Supervisor Olivera, do you have anything to say?
After discussing the council, no.
Okay, so we'll go into Building Department.
All right.
Is it a procedural error that you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, what is a procedural error?
Mr. Chair, normally you have public comment at the end of the particular agenda item. This works really good, but sometimes you have an extremely long amount of information, such as the budget, like two days. And it would seem to be appropriate that at each, each part of it, that you allow public comment on that particular part. It could be departments or however you choose. That way you allow the public to participate. Thank you.
All right. There was an agenda put, put out on it and so following the agenda that was put out.
Good afternoon, Chair Tofanelli and board members. I want to try to give a quick overview of our organization. As you can see in front of the budget, the organization, we have like 11 FTEs in the Building Department and we're requesting one more FTE which is going to be, which is called a Department Analyst. Mr. Lutz can probably embellish a little bit more on that, but there's going to be...
Can you clarify, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it is just the Department Analyst we're adding?
Right.
Did we not assume we were adding a Plans Examiner Engineer?
Yes, let me, I was going to explain that. So, also on the Building side, we are reclassifying the Senior Plans Examiner to be a Engineer Plans Examiner and upping it so that we've been having difficulties recruiting. We've had zero applications in the last eight months. So, we're having a really difficult time filling in those Plans Examiner positions. We do have one open that we've been recruiting, but we haven't had any luck. So, we're trying to redo the series in the Plans Examiners to create a succession, if you will, and kind of bring it up so that we can bring a higher quality plan review group in so that we can provide a better service. So, that's in the process right now with HR. Judy can probably speak a little bit more about that, but that's what we're doing on the Building side. So, we have one open position in the Plans Examiner. We have one new one which is going to be a Department Analyst, which will, as I think Mr. Lutz alluded earlier, that that could be used, maybe utilized with planning a little bit as we're going along to do more data, as we're going into data-driven decision-making for Analyst position. The other thing on the Code side, we have seven FTEs and two are open. One is on hold for offsetting the General Fund right now. So, one out of the five positions of the Code Enforcement is on hold. So, we're recruiting for the other open position as we speak right now.
Can I, can I suggest, for the sake of keeping this orderly, we stick with Building first then go to the Code Budget second?
Okay.
Otherwise, we're going to be jumping back and forth.
Okay, we'll stick with the Building right now. So, as far as the Building goes, we had, we're going to be looking for a little bit of General Fund, our Reserve Fund, as we were going to be able to offset the budget because the Trackett project is quite a lot of amount that we needed to use to draw from the Reserve. So, to balance it, we needed another $227,000. I think the CAO's recommendations is 1.9. We asked 1.7, but the difference is the, I think it's the Analyst position and the difference in the Engineer position differential. So, we're, that's how we had the Building side at this point. Any questions or...
I think it would be important to talk a little bit about, because one area that you're going to see change with your budget
Oh, yes.
is your professional services and particularly the plans that you're doing on your Plans Examiners, because that does represent a shift. Year-to-date, we're $271,000 in specialized services and we're only asking for $100,000. Most of this is in Plans Check, so hopefully you can kind of
And inspectors.
address what we're trying to do.
Well, the thought is, is as we are backfilling our positions, there's one other position, inspectors. We fill that with contract, oh, not get, phase off the contract services and bring in in-house Plans Examiner and Inspector, so that way we offset the 200. That's why we're asking only for 100. We're presuming that we'll be able to recruit somebody to bring it in-house. If that's not the case, we'll look at it later. Hopefully, we're successful at recruiting.
Well, if that's not the case, well, we'd be moving salary savings by not having those Plans Examiners
Correct.
from your personnel line down to that contract line.
Correct. So, those are the major items in our budget right there.
Any board questions?
Yes, your salary savings last year was how much?
Last year? I don't have that. I have just...
Just for Building.
I just have our schedule line for proposed this year and last year's maybe...
There's nothing listed in the...
Nothing listed, yeah.
He's really asking, Ed, real salary savings versus budgeted. And unfortunately
We don't.
with doing a dual screen like that, I tried this earlier, I can't be in the accounting system because of the way that the Citrix system works. So, unfortunately, I can't even run that scenario with you while I project onto there.
Well, the point is, is he had open positions, but they're not reflected here on the, on the budget.
Last year's budget, yes.
Right. It's not showing. What do you estimate your Plan Check turnaround time to be right now?
We're about three to four weeks right now. It's really not very good right now because we don't have the staff to turn around and everybody's impacted, even the private sector's impacted. So, that's why it's really good to, to bring in some quality, high-end Plans Examiner, like a Plans Check Engineer to, to try to bring in the, lower the turnaround times.
Okay, so your goal is to try to get it down into what, a 10-day turnaround roughly?
To the industry standards. While we're designing the new Trackett system, there's a baseline turnaround time matrix that we're going to do, a baseline performance matrix that I'll be bringing to the board probably as soon as we get the data, how we're doing. Are we meeting the deadlines? Are we meeting not the deadlines? And I'll be creating a, actually, performance report that you guys will be able to see. And so, we'll, has the baseline is like 15, 10, and 5, or depends on the project size. So, it's all customized to the project size. And so, that's what we're trying to do from the industry standard.
And fee schedules?
The fee schedule, we're in the middle of a fee study right now. We're wrapping that up this week. We're going to be scheduling presentations to the board here shortly, as soon as we get that done and presented. So, you'll be able to see the fee schedules during those deliberations.
And you're seeing this department as being revenue neutral?
As of right now, yes, sir. We're using...
If I can interject this piece, though, I would like to talk specifically into Supervisor Mills' point, is your transfer in from your designated fund.
Right.
Can you talk a little bit about what that transfer is and kind of where the importance of this fee study comes into play?
Right. As we go into the new fee studies, we're trying to offset some of the costs that we're not collecting because the last fee study was over 10 years ago. So, and some of the projects that we're collecting are under-collecting, so we're not quite meeting our full cost recovery. So, once we adjust that, we'll be able to start meeting our costs, you know, way the study goes. Right now, we're not being able to put any money back into our Building Fund, where it's the reserve right now. So, we've been depleting the fund for the Trackett system and to balance the budget this year. So, we have probably about $317,000 left in our reserve right now in the Building Reserve, which, you know, as the next following year, if we don't meet those goals...
And to be clear, I think we're projecting about $118,000
Yeah.
for final year
Right, right.
Once you pull in what you're budgeting this year.
That's the 118, minus the 200 if you had to use it. That's correct.
So, we definitely need that fee study to, I think, to your point, is right now, Building as structured is not entirely cost-neutral to the General Fund, although we are still able to use Building Department Reserves, but we want to correct that as soon as we can.
And the goal with the Building Department Reserve should be to, again, that 8% since you're revenue-neutral, so that there is no, there is a contingency factor built in. So, an attempt should be made to try to maintain an 8% on a revenue-neutral apartment.
And that would be a discussion we're going to have during those
Right.
fee studies with the consultant. You know, we were talking about 5, 8, you know, what a percentage do we want to...
Well, I think we set the goal by policy, 8%.
Our county policy now, 8%.
Then they would have that.
That's where we'd have to go. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Short, thank you for coming. I'm going to be, I'm going to be very direct. There's issues that have been brought to my attention and we've discussed this. And you've covered some of those issues. I'm concerned with the fact that we put out a recruitment effort of eight months and didn't receive one applicant. Do we know why that occurred?
Yes, it's very similar to, I think, what the sheriff's experiencing. The last time the job classifications had been looked at have been quite a stint in time and the salary competition with the surrounding areas, like a competitor here, surrounding jurisdictions have already up their salaries. So, for somebody to come up here, it just pays to go somewhere else. So, that's, that's our issue right now. It's just being competitive.
I understand.
And that's what we're trying to adjust for right now.
And you mentioned that you're working with HR
Yes, sir.
to address that issue.
Yes, sir.
And we haven't got to the final step of that voyage, obviously.
No, we're right in the middle of it, yes, sir.
Are we close?
Getting close on the Engineer Series classification and Plans Examiner. A Building Inspector would be a little different because you have to meet and confer with the unions, so it takes a little longer process. Judy could probably talk a little bit more about how to go through that process, but it is time-consuming.
These are things, and I'm, to be quite frank, these are things that are being suggested to me by our contractors in District 3. And I'm doing this in an effort to provide some answers to see that we are making some progress in these areas. Ms. Hawkins, thanks for coming.
With the changes that we have proposed and are working through, the idea is to create both a career ladder within the department and the ability to recruit experienced Plans Examiners, Senior, sorry, Plans Examiner Engineer to keep from having to send the plans out, reduce the time. And then also, HR is developing a whole new marketing process to push the jobs out there to try and create a want-to-want to move to Calaveras County to take these jobs. The kind of the, we created the hashtag where Calaveras works and we're pushing all the pictures, the beautiful pictures of our county out there, along with our recruitments. So, to get an idea of come visit us, come work where you play, come, you know, live where you, you know, work where you live and play, and that idea. And the other thing that we're doing is we're also requesting in my budget, Neo-Gov, which is a better recruiting process. And we have found, we've been tracking, when we push these recruitments out there, we have been doing kind of a matrix of how many people are clicking on our jobs and then how many people are applying for our jobs. And there is a huge problem there. People are looking at them, but they're not actually applying. And our process, you know, somebody had mentioned earlier that if it can't be done on their phone, they don't do it. And you can't apply for our jobs through your phone. And so, we're requesting software where you can do that, where you can apply. And if you, you can go on GovernmentJobs.com. If you're already in that system, then you can click on your login and then apply for the jobs in Calaveras County. The other things we can do for things like the Plans Examiner positions, the ones that we're not getting applications for, we can push out an invite in the Government Jobs website there and invite those that have, have applied for similar jobs and invite them to come apply at Calaveras County. So, HR is really trying to step up how we get people to apply at our county. And the Plans Examiner, you know, we had last budget cycle, or two budget cycles ago, had asked for a Senior Plans Examiner. And we had underestimated a little bit what the salary should be. And I think also, also during that timeframe, the building of the state had increased. People started building houses again. Our economy started recovering. And so, then those positions are becoming hard to find. And so, I think with the effort of building the career ladder where we can move people up, we will have a series of a 1-2 Plans Examiner, so we can have entry level and then build up into the higher level and then have the senior or the engineer that can do the higher level exams, Plans Exams. Then I think we will have a department that will definitely be able to do what we need here in the county and meet the expectations of your constituents.
Sounds like a very good plan. Thank you.
I hope so.
Yeah, well, in your opinion, and this is addressed to both of you, if you will, in your opinion, is a major factor that we can't get applicants a compensation package or is it just unavailability of qualified people to apply?
I think it's a, it's a long, it's a long list of things. In this county, we have a problem of not having enough house, affordable housing. And within that particular classification, there, you know, now there's not enough people in that skill set. You know, in 2007, '08, when, you know, people stopped building, then those in those trades either went and found other jobs or they left the state. And so, there's, there's a deficit in that, that skill set. And then also, you know, those that can do it can get paid more. So, you know, it's finding those people that, that we can target, that want to be in our beautiful county. And so, it's just, it's a long list of things.
Okay, final question. In your, in your proposed budget right now, these programs you've just described to us, that's included in this budget request?
Yes.
So, we've, you're requesting the funds to do this, this new program?
Yes.
Hopefully, it'll be successful.
Yes, it's incorporated.
I'd like to make a statement just to relay information being presented to me in my district, and that is people that are involved in the building trades, contractors, are having to lay people off because of a delay in getting Plan Checks, things of that sort. It's very important to my, my contractors up there that we address this, and it appears we are. And I want to commend you, Mr. Short, because those critical items that came for us, came before us, were able to be handled in three or four days. And that saves some jobs up there. According to the contractor, he was going to lay off seven people. Thank God we had that, those plans back to him by then. And I know he's one of a few, but I want to commend you doing a job of what resources you have now. I just want to make sure that you're requesting the resources to fix this problem in the next year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And just to add what Judy's saying, industry-wide, around California is a void of, of all these types of skill sets. So, it's a California-wide problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Mills?
My question, I think it's more to the CAO for fifth, line 5311. And I noticed this throughout the entire budget, is the, the costs for A-87 are substantially higher this year than they've been in past years. Is there something that's changed in the OMB circular or is it how we've allocated or what?
Unfortunately, this, this isn't an uncommon issue with any A-87 in a cost allocation plan, is because you're working in arrears.
Yeah, like at two years.
Building used County Council more, they used the auditor more in those years. And so, it, it is really a function of
How much they use the...
who uses, which department is using most of that time within the cost pool.
Okay.
And, you know, and I know this really did impact Building this year particularly. And it is, those types of unfortunate swings that you do get, it is also fairly common with an A-87.
So, just for clarity, we get that money back?
Well, we, we get it because basically instead it goes to the auditor's office, County Council's office, my office.
Right.
It's an offset. So, yes, you are correct in that it, it's shifting the General Fund, but what it's doing is trying to allocate the cost to which department is, is consuming that internally.
Yeah, and it isn't in the same year that you make that adjustment?
Yes.
It's two years back, two years back.
Yeah, it's two years, yeah. So, we're always going to be following the tail.
Right.
Any other questions?
You want to do code? Okay. Okay, on code, as you can see, as the ban came about, the regulatory funds ended. And so, we had to put the, the code into a separate General Fund budget. So, Building now has been separated under 580. Now, we have the code under 600 code. So, with that said, we went through and created a whole new budget for it. What we have done is offset some of the General Fund contribution through our abatement fund. We had some money in our abatement fund, which, which is going to be, after we're done, we may have made about $100,000 left and paying off some of the accounts receivables, but you'll see that down on another board meeting, with $150,000 transferred from our designated fund. And then the $150,000 assumed money's coming in from abatements, general abatements. So, you're going to have a revenue of about $382,000. As you go down to the expenses, like we said earlier, we're keeping one position on hold to offset the General Fund contribution. We're backfilling the other Code Enforcement Officers out of one of the five, which if you go down to the bottom, the net difference is going to be about $386,186 of contribution from the General Fund that we're requesting to offset it right now. And again, the status quo of the positions was seven. Technically, we still have seven, but one on hold. So, I just want to make that clear.
Ed, thanks a lot. The, you know, we, we discussed this a couple, a month or so ago when we were talking about your program and the success it's having. I think we all would want to have these things float on their own bottom, but we also recognize that we need to seed this program to build up the momentum to get things going. So, you and your team are aware that this is not going to be an ongoing. We won't be able to fund continuing at this level.
Right, and well, the, also, the fee study is going to help. Where, as I talked about in the other presentations, there wasn't any fee offsets for doing a regular caseload. With the new fee schedule coming up, we're going to be able to capture some of that as we go on along, but we don't have that adopted yet. That's coming here and we'll, as we learn this year, as we're doing the abatements, we'll be able to see how much we can be, recapture some of those caseload fees. So, there'll be some standard fees that will be able to offset that revenue. So, hopefully, we can start closing that as we're going along to get this thing, this new 8.06 working so that we can try to minimize the General Fund contribution.
Right.
But I, I don't think, you're right. 100% is very difficult.
100% is very difficult, but we want to...
Strive for it.
Well, as close as we can, I mean, we're just not going to have the money in the future. So, this is to prime the pump.
Can I, can I add a piece
Please.
to that comment in that, and that's part of what we've been working on, the fee consultant and looking at other counties. Realistically, Code Enforcement is, I think, unlikely that we would get to 100% recovery. And the, I would say that the challenge there is that inverse relationship in where we were before, you know, take cannabis completely out of the picture and minimally funding code and really not addressing some code violations or issues in the community. Coupled with being better at our abatement process and recovery, obviously, we hope to offset that as much as possible. But one of the reasons that I wanted code to be a, a specific budget unit again, rather than hidden under Building, is that I wanted there to, you know, us to be able to see it and know what the impacts are based on the level of staffing and make reductions based on what we want to see, you know, down the road.
And one thing I want to add on the new 8.06, our approach is not to be a quota base to go out and make money. We want to do courtesy and help people. We're looking for compliance. So, our, as you've seen in the 8.06, we're, we're going out there to work with compliance with a courtesy approach. So, you don't recapture all, everything in that approach. So, we're, you know, we're trying to be more friendly to the constituents.
Thank you. Sounds like we're on the same page. You just got to, we'll just keep squeezing on it.
Right, but that, there's a cost to that.
One of the things that jumped out at me was the execute three, we're going to do 300 citations for cannabis, which is what we discussed, but execute three non-cannabis abatement warrants. This is for your whole code team. Is that standard? Is that normal?
Are you talking about last year's?
No, it's in your, it's in your goals and objectives.
Oh, oh, well, warrants are a little more approach. We're trying to find compliance and abatement. So, as we go with the new 8.06, really, you're not going to do a lot of warrants or a lot of administrative hearings. You want to get compliance and recover the costs. So, that's why those numbers reflect that. So, our approach is not to go through that type of process, warrants and...
The other question I had was abandoned vehicle funds? And I wanted to see how that was going. I know we got
Oh, yeah.
we got a lot of vehicles that need to get towed out of here.
Yes.
I wanted to, I knew you were working with the CAO and I wonder where that is on the budget, where we're at.
It's not in the budget and the specific reason is, is it's actually not, this is a learning experience for us all. Well, that's actually not under the purview of the board. That is a JPA that approves that budget. So, you wouldn't see it in here as much as you would see it in the, in the JPA. We did have a meeting with...
JPA is with Saint, with Angels and us?
Yes. We did have a meeting with our contractor last week, late last week, to kind of get moving forward. I have already been contacting the Angels City Manager, letting her know about our needing to revise our contract and to keep the, the abandoned vehicle program going. At this point, the, the fund itself is, is okay. It's just an issue of the contract and making sure that the contractor is at least recovering his cost is essentially where we're at.
Okay, and so where, who's on the JPA and where is that in this budget? If it were JPA, we've got money in it, right?
Yes, and it's not, that's why I said it's not in this budget because it isn't under the purview of the board. The people on the JPA, myself, City Manager, and I'm trying to remember, Julie was determining who our final members were and I don't know that... Yeah, I, I, at this point, I knew that it was myself and the City Manager, which was a, a news to me, which is why we were scrambling to get the budget together.
Do we put any general funds into the JPA?
No, it all comes, it's all funded through the, the surcharge that everybody pays on their vehicle licenses. When they renew their vehicle license fee, there's that line item of that, that dollar. That's what it, that's what the funds come from.
Do we have enough funds in there to deal with the problem, to scale the problem that we have?
At this point, yes. The issue isn't necessarily a funding issue. The issue is needing to get the contract updated because the contract itself, the cost, the towers are losing money. And so, we need to adjust that and also the, the cap on that contract.
When will that be?
As soon as conceivably possible. We're wanting to fix it by the end of this month.
Great, great.
To add on what Mr. Lutz is talking about, if you look at 4799 on the code budget, $66,324, that comes from reimbursing our staff time from the ABA budget back into our budget. So, that pays for the staff time. So, we track that and so that's how we see it here. So, you do see a portion of it.
Right, because the only thing we've got more of than shipping containers is abandoned cars.
Correct.
So, this is the line you're referring to, Ed, right?
Yes.
Contributions from other governments.
State front.
Let me speak to that ABA thing for just a moment. Is, is that I, one of your, the contractors is up in your area. And one of the things he was stating to me was exactly that, that those contracts need updated. They're, they're not going to be doing it for free. And to this point, they're feeling as though they're doing it at a loss and so they're not wanting to participate. Well, that creates the problem is because we just, and we've got one over in my area the same way. It isn't that we don't have enough cars for them to work or vehicles. They're all out there. So, it's just a matter of, and it was a learning curve for me too on that ABA because I did not realize that it was a JPA. But it has to be incorporated to some degree in a working relationship with code to get that done.
Right, and we have to meet, we're trying to make the balance to, to make sure we meet the budget goals so that we... the budget goals so that we can get the maximum amount of money.
We can't expect our vendors to do work for free and...
Right.
And I'm sure that if we paid them fairly, we'd probably get more cars moving.
Correct.
And with our unemployment rate being one of the lowest, I think, in the last decade, that creates a crunch. It's an employee's market right now. They can kind of pick and choose, and so they, they can decide what kind of, they can negotiate their own rate to some degree on some of these jobs, simply because there's not enough people out there to do them.
That's correct.
So there's a crunch. I mean, we're on the, we're on the other side of that crunch, so to speak. If it's in a down economy, of course, they're all going to be standing at our door. So we take the good with the bad here.
And we get calls every day on ABA.
I'm sure.
A lot.
I'm sure you do.
Sometimes there are really large RVs abandoned.
We got to get them.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ed. This is time we just need to take a poll on the building department's budget as to whether we accept or agree with the CIO's proposal for this budget. I'll start with Supervisor Clapp.
We'll just, we're accepted until we go to...
We're just taking a poll in order to give direction when it comes back to us on the 26th.
Okay.
So you're, yes, Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Alvera?
Agreed.
Supervisor Garmendy?
Yes.
And I, yes, so we'll move on. We do the assessor's office next?
I can do that.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm here for any questions.
Good afternoon, Leslie.
Good afternoon.
Just get, pull your information up here.
Looks like it's going to be page 162 or thereabout in your book.
You're the only department that doesn't get A87?
No, our department can't be charged A87. We actually charge out.
That's interesting.
To special districts and things like that. So if you charge me 87, it's almost a double charge.
You are requesting additional three FTEs?
I requested three. The county administrator recommended two of those and agreed that if we're successful competing for the funds that the governor has in his budget, that we could get the third as a limited term for the duration of that funding.
That's the match you were describing yesterday?
Exactly.
So the salary on line 5400, salary ad only reflects just the two the CIO recommends and not the third?
Those on her budget, because that was her requested, I think those would have reflected all three, but prorated for when you anticipated hiring them.
They were always prorated from October 1st because the funds wouldn't come in until October 1st. So there's no extra three months that we'd sweep away at any level.
So that's why you see the difference in salaries and employee benefits is, department requested was 1.291, CIO recommended 1.26.
Any board questions?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Alvera?
Yeah, Ms. Davis, thank you for coming again. Ms. Davis, in the 2016, 2017 budget, what was your backlog numbers? Do you recall?
Well, we're in 1718 now, and we started at about 6,000. I think we started at about 4,400 that year.
Okay, you mentioned 6,000. When was that?
This year.
This year?
Yeah.
So we've increased the backlog?
We went back two years.
Okay.
Okay, and yes, the backlog increased, and now it's down. You asked last night, I said it was about 4,000.
Right.
I looked at the statistics when I got back in my office. It was 3,967, so I was off by 33.
You got to be sharper than that.
[laughing].
Now, the second part of that question, you were down, I believe, two or three employees at that time. Is that correct?
We had vacancies.
You had vacancies?
We were in the midst of recruitment.
And you filled some of those vacancies, correct?
I have filled every vacancy.
Every day. So we have seen a decrease in our backlogs.
Yes.
So the system's working as far as what we need to do. And hopefully, with the three positions you're requesting now, we'll reduce that backlog pending anything else that is going to be thrown at us, like another fire.
That would definitely be my hope. The numbers that are not counted in the backlog are our annual decline in value reviews. As I think you all know, and excuse me for going into jargon, but I don't know how to explain this anyway, other than quoting the Constitution. When property is acquired or newly constructed, it gets a basier value, and that, once that basier value is enrolled, it inflates by the increase in the Consumer Price Index or 2%, whichever is less, which is all fine and good until the economy tanks, which it did about 10 years ago. When that happens, we put property in a decline in value status, and the law requires that we review that annually. And we peaked at just over 20,000 properties in decline in value status. Right now, we have 11,374 in decline in value status, and about 2,500 of those are income-producing properties, so they're commercial industrial. Because our staff is relatively new and doesn't have the complex income-producing background to appraise, we have not been able to review those. Those are not counted in my backlogs because technically, they're not reappraisable events, although it is work that we should be doing. And so, again, thank you to the CIO for allowing me to use salary savings this year to bring in an extra higher appraiser three, who I'll be funding through the balance of this fiscal year to try and help us with some of, some of those properties. I know it's a lot of jargon, and I apologize.
I understood about 80% of us. That's pretty good for me.
Okay.
I'm going to make you aware of what, once again, is what's being relayed to me by my constituents in District 3. And there's a couple of circumstances that you've been personally handling, and I thank you for that because it's been a problem in the past three or four years. And we're not going to go into that. One of the bits of information is I haven't been able to contact the office and get a result over a problem that's been three to four years old. I understand that's improved, and that's a good move, good move. Do you have enough resources to handle that backlog is my big question here. And I want to make sure that we're funding you properly to make progress in this.
I think my request goes a long way toward making progress. As I mentioned in my budget narrative, when I assumed office in January of 2009, we had 21 budgeted employees, 19 permanent and two extra hire. Over the course of the budget cuts, the board reduced my staffing to 11.2 full-time employees. 11.2 is where we started to, to begin to experience issues, and then, as you all know, the Great Recession occurred, and that increased our workload exponentially. And then we had the problem with the Buick Fire, and so we continued to get behind. I think that my request takes a giant step forward toward helping my staff have enough resources and enough people to get this work going through the process. I try not to come in and ask for the moon in terms of staffing because I prefer to be a bit more conservative, which of course follows your, your board's budget policies, and sit back and see, how is it working and do we need more? So two years ago, I asked for an additional appraiser. I got an additional appraiser. It's just not enough. Now I can see that what I need are the higher-level, more experienced appraisers to come in and assist as well. If this isn't enough, I'll be back.
[laughing] Is there any way that we can get an updated progress report to make sure that we're making the effective moves in this budgeting for your department? Quarterly report, doesn't have to be a presentation, maybe just a note to our board clerk.
I don't have a problem coming to you quarterly and you're at the beginning of your meeting and telling you how we're doing.
That would be fine. I mean, that would be my personal, I can't speak for the board.
I can tell you that once I have...
I think it's a great idea, yeah.
Once I've applied for the, for the funding that the governor's put into his budget, I'll be required to do annual reporting. It's just something that we'll have to set up a database query, and I can push the button and come in quarterly and tell you where we are with it.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
The problem for you will be, since you don't have the experience with the workflow that goes through our office, I'll know that I'm seeing some progress. It won't sound like it to you. So for example, we started with a backlog of about 6,000 last year at the beginning of our work year. It peaked at 8,100. It's now down to 4,000. So what I would be telling you is, okay, our backlog's 8,100, and because you don't understand our workflow, I can see how you might get a little anxious over that number going up. That's just the nature of the workflow.
I'm sure, I have confidence you'll be able to explain it to us later.
Okay.
Okay.
Supervisor Mills?
Thank you. You mentioned file scanning. It's almost a monumental task at best. How long do you think it's going to take to accomplish, and what line item would we be looking at on your budget to explain where this is?
I would expect it to go under professional and specialized services, and if the CIO wouldn't mind scrolling down to give me that number because I know I have about 5,000 or 6,000 in there now, that would be 5271. So I would expect that particular project to fund on that line item. And again, that would be something I would be asking for the state to help us with because that's intended to help with efficiency in the department so that we can pull up the information faster when we're talking to property owners.
Would you want to be doing this as a year-over-year expense? In other words, not just thinking about it for this year, but years going forward as well?
I think it's going to largely depend on what the vendors tell us in terms of how long they think it will take to scan 50,000 files, name them, and make them accessible. We will also, just so you know, we'll incur some storage costs because we're going to have to take those file cabinets with key. We're going to have to put them in storage locked, but continue to be accessible. There's a clause in the Revenue and Taxation Code that tells us how long we have to keep documents if we scan them. So we will also incur some storage costs associated with that. Hopefully, by the time I'm applying to the state, I will have identified all those little hidden costs associated with this project.
I have a question on that piece. So you're at 6,500, because unfortunately, you were the only department, I think, that didn't do line item detail, so it didn't give me the descriptions of what the items were. Otherwise, I would have been able to ask this question before. At 6,500, I, if the intent is for the scanning itself, would that be...
Not, it is not budgeted currently.
Okay, it's not budgeted currently?
It is not budgeted.
Okay.
This is for our outside case audits.
Okay.
We entered into a, it's essentially a JPA, but not quite agreement with all California counties. The Board of Supervisors in 1988 approved it. It is a cooperative audit services exchange where we literally sell the audits that we need to have done to other counties in the state. They send their auditor appraisers out to do those audits. So we're saving money not having to hire an auditor appraiser to do that work.
That, that makes me feel better. I just wanted to make sure.
That's what that line I missed.
Because it's going to be a lot more to pay somebody to scan that many files, particularly if it's going to be onsite.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and we have not been able to make contact with vendors to get a sense of how long, back to your question of how many years. We don't know how long it will take or how much it will actually cost. I'm hopeful that we can get it done sooner rather than later because, as I said last night, I need the real estate for people.
The fastest route is for sure to hire a vendor. I did this while I was in Tulare, and in one of our situations with our HR files, we didn't want offsite. I would assume we'd be in a similar boat with the assessor's files, which means bringing somebody onsite. It took roughly three weeks to get that extensive amount of HR files done, and it was not inexpensive, that's for sure. It cost about $70,000.
So what is the 4721 designated fund that's used in this?
That's the assessor's designated fund intended to help us essentially develop and maintain the physical characteristics system. Historically, what I have used that fund for is to acquire vehicles. So instead of coming to you and saying, I need the general fund to give me $40,000 to go out and get a four-wheel drive or a all-wheel drive Ford Escape, I simply make a request for a transfer from my designated fund. As a result, I don't bring that fund before you very often because it's growing at about $10,000 a year, maybe 15 in a good year, and so it grows so gradually that until and unless I have a car die, I don't come back to you with that request.
Looks like you're balanced about $65,000 right now, give or take.
Yeah, I'm getting very close to being able to get two more vehicles, and I have two vehicles that are on the ragged edge of not making it.
Where does the money come from?
The money comes from sales that we have to the public that are related to physical characteristics. So when they come in and buy maps, we have very large data resellers who will purchase the assessment roll and the characteristics. Our current charge is $4,400, looking toward a potential increase for that. I think we sell two or three of those, so we're actually making between 12,000 and 15,000 a year on that.
Thank you.
We used to make significantly more, and I think it's something that the board should probably know about. One of the first things that I did when we started having to downsize as a result of budget cuts is I stopped all work that did not contribute to producing an assessment roll. So what had happened before is folks would come in and they'd say, and I'm just making this up, I'd like a list of all vacant parcels in Saddle Creek. That is not a public record. That is a special request. We could charge for that, and that charge would go into that designated fund. But I cut off those special requests because we had lost so many people. Our focus had to be on production of the assessment roll. Depending on how it goes, I can tell you that the public really misses that service.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question, and maybe Mr. Lutz can answer this. I'll present it to both of you. When the sale of a property by the county for non-payment of taxes, that type of thing, where does that, where do the proceeds go? Do they go to the general fund, or do they go to the assessor's office? Or is there some designation for that?
That's a tax auction or a tax delinquency handled by the tax collector's office. And so I will let Mr. Lutz handle it, although I do know what happens to it.
And part's going to depend on, so walking through your scenario again, a property that is going because prior taxes are owed on it, correct? Is that your scenario?
That's...
So yes, it does, then the tax collector at, and I don't remember all the statutes or provisions for how long she has to have it in delinquent status. I think it's around five years.
It's exactly five years.
That it needs to be in delinquent status, at which point then she can take it to auction, and then it goes through, based on the auction proceeds, you know, the priority list of debtors that, and one of those, although we're not number one priority, but one of those would be the county and owed taxes.
Okay, but who gets that money?
It depends.
The money that's designated just for the county, does that go to the tax collector?
It goes to the general fund.
Yeah, just back into the general fund.
And actually, it doesn't...
Okay, can I chirp in here since I may want somebody doing this?
Well, hold on a second, Mr. Clapp, because I just want to make sure we really clearly answer this question. To the extent that there are back taxes owed, the taxes themselves go to the county general fund. The penalties and interest are what's funding teeter.
Right.
Okay? If there are excess proceeds, the tax collector has steps that she has to take to disburse those funds, either to the property owner or the person who had an interest in that property. And just so you know, it's not that I'm a tax collector expert, but the state comptroller appointed me to her committee on property tax collecting procedures, so I've learned way more about tax collection than I ever thought I wanted to know. Okay?
I think you did excellent.
Thank you, Supervisor Clapp.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Guerra Mendi?
Thank you. Leslie, yesterday when you were talking about the governor wanting to give money to beef up tax, or collections, because they like to collect their taxes, I got home last night and I went, and I thought to myself, is there an equation that tells us, if you add another assessor or appraiser, what sort of ROI is on us? You are a revenue generator, so it's a sales question. I know it's not sales, but you're a generator, so what is the equation?
There is no real equation. Over the years, and I will tell you, back in the 90s, I think it was Assembly Bill 616, and then it was Assembly Bill 719, and then it was the pilot program, and now this is the program. Many assessor's offices have attempted to figure out, for every dollar you give me, how much am I giving you back? Because it sounds great during budget.
Yeah.
Right? The answer is anywhere from two to 11 times your investment comes back to you. And it really depends on the county, it depends on the state of the assessment role, and it depends on what types of events haven't been captured. So we may actually be in a situation where someone is purchasing a piece of property for less than it's assessed at, we still have to value that event, but that's a negative return on investment, right? So that's why the amount varies from county to county, and in some counties, property's worth a heck of a lot more than it is in Calaveras County, so they get a higher return.
Okay, if you could, if you could ever solve that, that'd be a great pitch coming in here.
Well, yeah, except, you know, the taxpayer doesn't like to hear the assessor say out loud, "Hey, you fund me and I'll make you more money," because the taxpayer wants to know that the assessor cares about the taxpayer first, and you're funding second, and so I want that very clear.
There's, there's no doubt about that, I specifically addressed in the backlog, you have to follow the rules and the law, but if we get caught up and it produces more income, that's a good thing. My final question is, and we talked about this last night, about the RE class, that one FTE on there. I'd like to know more about that, and I continue to have concerns about duplication of efforts around GIS, so if you could talk about the RE class, and then give me assurances that we're not doing something twice.
I can absolutely assure you, at this point in time, there is no duplication of effort. My maps are produced using AutoCAD, the GIS team is using Esri products. However, I can also tell you that over the years, I have been looking at ways to make my office run more efficiently, and to produce maps that the public and other county departments actually want to use. So, just by way of history, the assessors required to maintain assessment maps, and those assessment maps are intended to describe the property that is the security for the lien of taxes. Again, I'm sorry for the jargon, but that's just what the law says. That's why I'm required to do it, and not a GIS division. Over the years, we've gone from ink on Mylar to computer, two-dimensional drafting programs that produce maps. And now, there's GIS. Well, I think you all know that when you go out on Google, or you're going out on the county's GIS, that's what you're used to looking at, and I realize, that's what the public's used to looking at, and there has to come a time when the maps that I'm producing are married to what the public is actually expecting. So I expect we will be transitioning to the Esri product. Again, Mr. Moore and I have met, we will continue to meet to try to work this out. As long as that responsibility under the law rests in my office, I'm going to fight for that position to be in my office with taking work direction from me. But I can assure you at this point, there is no duplication of effort. And I'm sensitive to your point, I, as a taxpayer of this county, I don't want to think I'm paying tax dollars that are paying for two different departments to do the same thing. So if we reach a point where I think that that might be happening, I will certainly bring Mr. Lutz into the, into the conversation.
I was just listening to your words, and it was, "As of today, at this point," that's not, and this budget's about tomorrow. So, I'm going to, I will probably recommend that we, when we do our polling, this is something we table until we get better clarity, because I, I do have concerns.
Well, part of, part of the reclassification, I really have to tell you, is that as the job is written right now, it almost mirrors exactly the GIS tech, and it's paid $5 an hour less than a GIS tech. It also almost exactly mirrors the engineering tech, and it's paid $5 an hour less than the engineering tech. There is inequity within the county that we are attempting in part to remedy and to acknowledge what this position does. And when I say right now, I mean, gee guys, you've got to realize, I'm essentially running a battleship. This is a $7 billion assessment role with 50,000 assessments on it, these changes don't happen overnight. In, if I'm lucky, I will be able to accomplish the changes I want in mapping, maybe in two or three years. I think this is a critical reclassification, actually, I think all of the reclassifications I asked for are critical. If I, if I'm only going to get them one at a time, I think this one is really important for internal equity in the county.
Any other supervisor questions?
Leslie, are you going to be bringing any tax sales to the board soon, or?
Tax sales?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, I don't do that. That's Barbara.
Okay.
And I thought I saw it on the agenda a week or two ago, she generally brings the delinquency list to you sometime in June, and she typically goes out to auction. She has of late been using an online system to do her tax auctions.
Okay, thank you.
For the public who's watching, they might want to go onto her website, because she puts them out on her website when she's about ready to do a tax auction.
Any other questions? No, thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Liberations on this issue? I guess we have an issue of GIS and CAD reclassification?
I believe all sides, I just, I believe all sides, I think they're trying to act fairly, I'd just like to have a little bit more clarity before we move forward on that.
So you want to, you would like to table it at least until September, final budget?
I think so, I'd like to, but the other stuff, this appraiser and assessment.
I, I share the same concern that Supervisor Guerra Mendi does, and the duplication of efforts could be a factor, I think tabling at this time might be a wise decision on that issue only, but the other issues discussed, I'm good with.
The other recommendations I'd see-
I'm good with those.
Supervisor Mills?
I'm not for tabling it.
You what?
I will not table it.
You will not table it?
And I think Ms. Hawkins might also have a discussion from the HR standpoint on the recommendation.
Something that I would like to bring up about the current cadastral specialist position is that there is an inequity in that salary. As it stands right now, as the job description is written, the, there, the pay is significantly under what other counties are paying. The job description, I think that this is not so much a RE class as a upgrade of the job description, and so if it is a case of trying to make sure that the, the GIS portion is looked at at another time, but I think that we really need to, the salary increase needs to be pushed through as, as it is in the documents, because there is a significant difference to what we're paying now, and we have not been able to successfully fill that position. I don't, Leslie, in how many years?
I would fill now.
But I mean, at the levels that, that Leslie has tried to recruit at, she's tried to recruit at threes, and we filled them at entry level. So we definitely need to-
Did you say it was, it's, you said you have been unable to fill it at this level?
It is underfilled as a one.
But it was filled.
It is underfilled at the moment, yes.
So, you haven't been able to get, so I'm confused. Is this the person that you want for the job?
Originally, as recruit, as the recruitment was done, they were, we were recruiting for a three. We have underfilled it with a one, because we were unable to recruit a three.
So are you going to hire a three, and there'll be a one, two, or are you promoting the one, two, or three?
So, the, we would continue to keep a one, but I think we, the one is still underpaid for what we are paying that position.
So is this a new position?
No.
No.
We are just trying to update the job description and the pay for this position, because there is an inequity.
I understand what you're saying, I'm just, I think you're getting the runaround, Jack.
No.
Well, I'm just not sure, you said that you couldn't hire someone at the three level, so you hired someone at the one level, and then you're going to take that person at the one level, and promote them to the three level.
No, they will continue to be the one, but just, when we're looking at if, for some reason, the position was to become vacant in the future, or just looking at what we're paying this position, it's just an example of trying to, the recruitment difficulties we've had in this position because of the pay.
So, so let me ask you this, trying to clarify what's being said here. We're being asked to add two FTEs, both of those are one, one's an appraiser one, and one's an assessment technician one. So, is this person doing this job now expected to drop down into one of those, and you go recruit for GIS?
No. No, let's talk about, let's talk about reclassification for a minute. This county has long done something that I have a problem with, and that is, if you want your people to have more money, you have to reclass them, you have to call them something else. Okay, right now, that job series, the mapping job series, is called Cadastral Specialist 123. In order to get more money, in order to fine tune what we need to do for my office operation, this county's process has always been, reclass them, ask for the higher salary. I need a mapper on staff, at one point I had three, I'm down to one. Judy is quite correct, we have had extensive problems recruiting for that. It is one of three disciplines in my office. The other, one of the other disciplines is the appraisal realm, and then the last one is the assessment analyst. The mapper is not moving into either of the two other positions that we're requesting. We're requesting two appraiser threes, one of which the county administrator has said we can consider for a limited term, and one assessment technician. That is not what the mapper does, the mapper literally does our mapping.
I think where I'm, I think where I'm confused is, is the whole three and one thing, it's already, it's already, were you able to, was this recruited at a, at a three?
No.
It was not?
Okay, it was recruited as a 123, it was filled as a one, the position on the books is a three.
Why did we fill it as a one?
Because I could not find anyone who could meet the minimum qualifications of a three, which meant they needed to know how to map for an assessor's office, and who would accept that pay. So instead, what I did was I recruited someone with absolutely no experience, and I have been putting them through training as a one.
And you intend to make that person, is that person now qualified to be a three?
No, that person will be a one in the newly reclassified series as well. That person is qualified to be a one in the reclassification, and they will be a one. We will not have a three, because in the first place, that incumbent does not qualify for that level. In second place at this point, I'm not willing to lay someone off simply to bring a three in. We have an investment in this employee.
Makes it a little bit clearer, thank you for clearing that up. It was a little confusing on what-
I just don't want you to compare apples and oranges, there's the appraiser.
No, and I, and I, I'm sure the board kind of understands now exactly what you were trying to say, that there'll still be one, you're just going to call him, or reclassify him to GS, CAD, GIS, and then still, the other two, the assistant and, and the appraiser coming on as ones, or two, or three, whatever we recruit.
Correct.
Okay.
And my point is that we can adjust the job description, but the salary needs to be adjusted.
I'm just going to point out that, you know, the assessor, what we already know, the assessor is independently elected, and she'll run her shop the way she chooses. If we want to have the assessor, so once we give her the money, she's going to do what she wants to do with it. Hopefully, today she has no intention of going, building a GIS. I'm just, would like to have that whole thing worked out before we hand it over, because we're not going to have any control or way to make sure they all work together. And I know your intention is to work together, Leslie, I'm just concerned.
Okay. Let me be really clear about this GIS parcel fabric. We created initially in my office. Okay? The parcel layer as it was labeled then, the parcel fabric as it exists now, was initially created in the assessor's office. What happened five years ago is my Cadastral Specialist 3 took a job over in IT, in GIS, for a significant raise, because they get paid more, and they took over the parcel fabric. That's, it's, it's never been about us taking something away, it's about me mapping for assessment purposes, and that parcel fabric is critical to that mapping. We're just not at the point where we're moving forward with that, Jack.
I understand the history.
Okay, and I'm going to stand here, and somebody quietly said, "You're going to go rogue." Look, I have always attempted to work with the board, with the admin, with whatever department is on the periphery of some of these tasks, and I think Stan said it to you last night, I said it last night and again today, we have opened discussions on this particular issue. I'm just not letting loose of a responsibility that I have by law.
Nor am I, all right, there we go.
Okay?
But in reality, this, this reclassification is not doing anything different, you're still mapping, you're still using this person to do what you're saying.
Exactly.
So, so it's not-
This reclassification is getting more money for someone who deserves it for equity purposes.
So, okay, thank you. So, have you changed your opinion on the poll?
No.
Supervisor Olivera?
No.
Supervisor Mills, you wanted to go forward as presented?
As presented, knowing that this is a 14% increase over last year, and knowing that it is a 14% increase over last year's budget.
Assessor's budget, overall.
Yes, sir. I just wanted us to be aware, those three positions and what that represents.
The question now is, though, we're pulling on-
Yes, you would go forward.
You, you go forward, rather than holding off until a final budget?
Yes.
Supervisor Clapp? Talking about the reclassification?
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're talking about, I'd like to explain Sam for it.
Turn your microphone on, please.
If we put it off until the final budget, what, what does it hurt? What, what?
Can I, can I ask which portion to put off?
Just the reclassification is what Jack was asking, that's, that's what we're talking about right now.
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so if we did that, what does it hurt? What, what harm does it do to give Jack that, or, and the other two, what they want? Is there?
At the end of the day, no, it's, it's three months, if, if you-
Yeah, I would, I would go along with him.
With putting it off?
Yes.
So we have three, four, putting it off until final budget, and readressing at that time, September? And I'm, I'm for doing the same, so I guess we have four, one, to hold off on that. Going into the other recommendations of the two FTEs by the CIO, where do we stand on that? Supervisor Guerra Mendi?
I support that.
Supervisor Olivera?
I support that, but I want to make sure that we, we can have some measure of a performance and see if we're doing the right thing down the road on that quarterly reporting issue. I think that's a good idea.
I do, I would, I would support it. Supervisor Mills?
I would agree as well, with the understanding that we have to see a performance change with the additional personnel and staff.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
I support that also.
Yes.
All right, shall we move on to-
Oh, I was going to say, do you have a preference for what you want next?
District Attorney, he's been sitting here.
Good afternoon, Barbara Yook, District Attorney.
Good afternoon. There's a second here, we'll find her.
Looks like it should be on about page 238.
Anybody have it? Page, the salary or the Schedule Nine starts in 235? We, you gave a presentation yesterday, and we talked about what you were requesting, and that was to eliminate assistant and reclassify as a deputy, and then you wanted to add one deputy into the sheriff's office?
That's correct, that's part of my-
Part of-
Total request, all we talked about yesterday were those, was those two items, the main thing being the addition of the high-level deputy district attorney to be housed with the sheriff's office for, specifically for the marijuana team right now, and there was some confusion that we clarified based on another request I have in the form that should have gone with the packets, it went into Open Gov, for an additional deputy DA entry level as a swap-out for my long-term administrative assistant, too, who is retiring, that's budget neutral, and that was, that caused some confusion with admin, I think, and putting things together.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Deputy, District Attorney Yook, you, you mentioned high-level DA-
Yes.
-versus an entry-level DA for those two positions.
Yes.
Would you be transferring one of your current ADAs into that position?
For the marijuana?
Marijuana, yes.
No, my intention would be to bring on someone new, if I can recruit somebody.
You would hire a high-level?
Yes.
Okay.
It would have to be, because this is somebody who would have to have a lot of experience in order to build and tackle the mixed civil and criminal caseload due to the complex prosecutions that would be required, and, you know, we're talking about the unfair business practices, organized crime, and the whatever marijuana's gonna look like going forward, if it ends up being more of a consumer protection type scenario, or if it's just, just criminal portions, it's just a very broad practice, complex prosecutions, and so it requires a high, a very highly experienced attorney.
And they would handle that all the way from investigation, to charging, to trial?
Yes.
So, it would be a trial DA?
Yes, that's a prosecution.
So, that would be very expensive?
Yes.
If they're that qualified?
Yes.
What kind of, what kind of salary range is that?
Um, in this budget, if I will add, it might help provide clarity, so with that error, I will say that salary is in this budget request, and it's about $120,000.
It is?
It, that's, it is in this budget request, I'm looking at the line item right now, that it was included in here, because when we pulled it in, my understanding was we were pulling in that other deputy, so that was the miscommunication that aired, so that salary is in this budget as submitted.
So, there are two deputy DAs?
Yes.
The one was budget neutral, and this one, we budgeted with a full family benefits, which is what we, we do, not, because we don't know what the case is gonna be, and our estimate was 146, not 120. So-
And part of it, I mean, our internal estimation of what an employee costs versus what the department puts in there, we typically go with what we feel is gonna be that cost. It also might have factored into when we expected it to be hired, because it wouldn't be hired right away.
That's true, that's correct, and we did budget some, we budgeted for that in the salary savings, because we would be requiring the person to undergo full post background, estimating, I think I might have only estimated a month, but it would probably be more like three months, because of where they would be housed.
I have a question, would this person be solely on marijuana, I mean, if they were looking for search warrant for other things, could they utilize this person in an office too, if it's not marijuana-related?
I believe that, right now, and in the foreseeable future, it is absolutely a full-time caseload. I, it's, it's not that, it's, would be under a grant, for instance, where the person couldn't do other things, so I, I, we would utilize them as we, as we were able. I do anticipate it would be a full caseload, and a, and a high-demand, very, very busy You mentioned search warrants, and I just wanna share some information with you on how busy it's been.
Or investigations, or, or whatever need be, if it's unrelated to marijuana, if they're, they're investigating something else, and, you know, you mentioned gangs and things like that, it could be meth or other drugs, or firearms, or something else, that they may need his expertise on doing investigations on, or-
I would, if we were able to get this position and they were housed with a sheriff's office, I would not tell them if a detective comes to you and needs you to review a search warrant, or needs some help on a homicide, that you have to say no unless there's marijuana involved, I, I, I would not say that. So, they would be accessible and available for other assistants. You know, we have to, you know, the court expects us to be fungible, which means that if one DA is not available, another one has to be able to step in, and that, that only works to a certain extent, obviously, we have different levels of experience, and when we can have vertical assignments, we try to stick with that. That is the best model, especially for certain types of crime, a vertical model where you have one attorney assigned to a particular case. You don't have duplication of effort, you don't have multiple employees trying to get up to speed on the same file, it's not very efficient, and you, you lose information sometimes. So, I would definitely strive for a vertical assignment, but that doesn't mean that they would be locked in and couldn't do anything else if we needed them to.
That was my concern, is we're saying this, but if they need you immediately for something, then, I'm, I'm not saying it's gonna take away all the caseload from your office and not using, utilizing your office for the sheriff's office, but in, in some circumstances, I didn't wanna be able to just lock him in and him say, no, I'm here for-
Right.
-marijuana, and that's it, so.
If I could follow up on that question, you were here this morning for our conversation with the sheriff, and, and talking about the marijuana enforcement team, and you heard me discuss the, that, you know, we've really got about a year of funding left on this, and I wanted to make sure that when that funding was up for the Met team, he could lend those deputies back into his standard work and fill out the stable, for lack of a better term, I'm sure there's a better term, to keep things going. So, that being the probable case, if we look at our finances, what are you gonna do with this attorney when there is no Met team? What will they be embedded with?
That would be up to you, so.
Well, it's an ongoing expense for us.
I realize that.
So, we suddenly have a very high-paid attorney, working on a team that no longer, embedded in a no-longer-existing team, comes back to Supervisor Toffenelli's point, what, what is that person at that point?
I would love to be able to tell you that there will be no crime, and there'll be nothing for them to do, and we can let them go. I don't anticipate that that would be the case, even if there is no team, I think there would be plenty of work to do, should you decide to, to allow us to do it. Currently, we don't have a consumer protection unit, we don't have an environmental crimes unit, we don't have a public corruption unit, we don't have an organized crime unit, we don't have specific-
I understand, I understand, there's, there's unlimited needs.
Yes.
I'm just thinking, you've got an equity issue now between your other deputy DAs, and you brought in this gun, and how does it all fit? I don't doubt there's plenty of work. I'm just curious, with this ongoing expense over years ahead, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm just curious, 'cause I'm not concerned about this year, I'm concerned about the out-years, and what they look like.
The attorney that I was asking for is a four, I currently have two fours in my office now, after our restructuring that we did a few months ago, and all I can say is there's plenty of work to go around, there will be plenty of work to go around, there will be plenty of need for a high-level, a high-level attorney, and something I wanted just to address, and it's something that you stated earlier, and I was very happy for your acknowledgement of it, that, that, you know, the sheriff's office and my office were not about bringing in revenue, we're not about making money, you know, our mission is to seek justice, sometimes seeking justice and seeking some punishment does include seeking fines and fees, and hurting the bad guys that way. So, while we never talk about it in terms of, you know, hey, this position could bring in some revenue, the reality is, is that it can. And once again, I'm not, you know, going down that road of painting us as revenue makers, but if you look at one of my designated funds, the environmental fund, it's, it's grown, it's grown slowly over the years, but it's grown because of the efforts of CDAA and the statewide prosecutors association, I mean, program, and the circuit prosecutors, circuit prosecutors' efforts. So, we could be doing more of that, we could be doing more if we had the ability to do it in-house, and, and really trying to go after some of the financial punishment that can be had, that we're just not doing. And as a forfeiture as well. It, it grows slowly because we are only dealing with the, the cash that someone leaves lying around, we don't, we don't have the ability and have not traditionally gone after, you know, the houses, the bank accounts, the cards, things like that, I mean, sometimes we get them, and then we auction them off, and then those coffers grow slowly, 'cause it is, once again, a punishment, it's not a money-making effort, but we're only doing small pieces of it that we stumble across, if you will, instead of having a very more robust and targeted approach.
Mr. Chair, District Attorney Yook, I-
Yook.
I've got some concerns, and these are more of a realistic, mechanical operation of this, this issue. We're gonna take a high-level attorney, district attorney, experienced in a variety of, of investigations that could develop out of the cannabis situation, and we're gonna be utilizing him in conjunction, embedded at the sheriff's department, and he's gonna, he or she are going to assist in the enforcement of the cannabis ordinance to an extent on the criminal side, gonna assist in writing search warrants, and going to assist in the associated crimes when on cannabis investigations. Who's gonna write the search warrants, and what's his support staff gonna be like? Is he gonna do all of his own research, all of his own search warrant draft?
Okay, my deputies don't-
How does that work?
My deputy DAs don't draft search warrants.
Okay.
It's a liability issue, it's-
I understand.
-it's an investigatory function, we review them, we try to make sure that they're bulletproof, and they're gonna stand up in court, compared to when a judge reviews it, the judge just reviews it for probable cause.
I understand.
We are looking down the road, are we gonna, are we gonna, is this gonna stand up in court? Is there, is there information we need to protect, can we, is there information that's missing that we need to put in? We balance it with the ever-changing laws, and that has been very labor-intensive over the last two years. Search warrants, sometimes there's easy ones, and sometimes they're very, very complex ones.
I understand that.
So, the, you know, we're focusing on the Met team, the investigating officer would be writing the search warrant, and my deputy would be there to help advise, to review, and to sign off on it, and help them get through with the judge, okay? And that's very important, it's very important to make sure that all that work is not for not, because it gets thrown out, gets thrown out later, because there was some legal insufficiency.
So, as, as we take that process to trial, with evidence, interpretation of evidence, rounding up witnesses, things of that sort, things that your office does now with the help of investigators and legal clerks, that, that's my concern, is you're gonna take a high-level attorney, embed him in the sheriff's department, and they're gonna be kind of a, an assisting overseer of the legal aspects of those cases, but who's gonna do the grunt work? Who's gonna do the groundwork when that thing gets, that case gets through the procedure and goes up to trial? I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't think there's enough manpower or woman power for just one person to be successful. Maybe you should think of maybe putting some type of revenue, a halftime FTE or something to assist that person, is that a, do I off-base there?
If you recall, for at least the last two years, I've been requesting a four-person unit, and, and the reason was, I didn't wanna set up someone for failure. If you recall, it was the deputy DA-
That's what I'm afraid of, we're setting somebody up for failure.
-forensic accountant and a support staff person. Through negotiations and discussions with admin, and HR, and the auditor, I agreed to scale back, because we at least have to start somewhere. The, you know, the other piece of it is the sheriff's office maintaining their team, and maybe getting a couple more investigators, there's that investigation piece, that's, there's, there's that, that's, that's been built up on that end, for the forensic accounting. This position does come along with a special budget for contracting, for forensic accounting services, so we can get started and see how that goes, and, and following the money, you know, and seeing, seeing where those investigations go, and, so, but, so, so when you look at it that way, the centerpiece would be some more prosecutor resources. We have started a new kind of addition or change to our case management system, where prosecutors can start drafting their own complaints, instead of it going through staff. So, we've done some streamlining that should, should be helpful, and reduce, reduce the need for support, it would still be there, but because they can draft their own complaints, we still can't file electronically with the court, so there still is that piece, but they can draft their own complaints, that streamlines, that, streamlines that process. If they are embedded with the unit, shouldn't be a problem to get their partners to court when it comes to testifying, but we do have the subpoena process, which is also in kind of a web-based subpoena service for peace officers. So, so there's a lot that we've done over the last couple of years that should make the prosecutor a little more self-sufficient, as far as, as far as needs for support staff, but they would still be my deputy, even though they are housed in the sheriff's office, and they would still have access to the other support staff that are housed in my, in my calendar.
And once again, I, I bring this up because I've actually been in that situation in my law enforcement experience, sometimes in the big city police departments, and sometimes in our county, it's the sheriff's office here, and I'm, I'm very concerned that if you're gonna get a high-level attorney, district attorney, and they have the position embedded in that sheriff's department without any physical support, I think your candidate list's gonna be very, very short, if you can get anybody. I'm gonna come in here for $140,000, for your estimate, and I'm gonna come from an experienced agency that had legal clerks, that had DA investigators, and they're gonna wanna come to here and, and say, well, I'm gonna go sit in the sheriff's department, and I may have to draft my own complaints, but I'm gonna oversee the search warrants done by law enforcement, and believe it or not, sometimes DAs and law enforcement will get along that well. I'm very concerned about that, and I'm, and my concern is, maybe we need more than a one-high-level attorney to make, to, to be successful. I mean, am I off-base?
I don't think you're off-base, and I appreciate the support for the vision of how it could work, but I've been asking for two years and we haven't gotten it, so, you know, and it's, and it's a lot of money.
Believe me, I'm in support of you.
I completely acknowledge that, I completely acknowledge it as a lot of money, but I, I feel like we have to start somewhere, and I would assume that the attorney, if they needed help, they would ask for it, you know, and we're talking about some of the mechanics of having the paperwork drafted and going to court, so, it's, I mean, that's all, that's all stuff, that's all stuff that we can handle.
I just wanted to bring those issues up, so everybody's looking the same thing.
I appreciate it, and my staff does have experience in, in some of the civil filings through the support that we do for CDAA, so when we have our environmental prosecutor based out of Sacramento, and he's got something to file, they work with my staff here, and, you know, they email the documents, we print them out, we get them signed, you know, and then we, we file them, so we already have some support staff with experience in supporting an outside- So we already have some support staff with experience in supporting an outside attorney, an attorney who's not necessarily housed under our roof and who is doing some civil and some criminal work. I mean, it's, it's not that often, and it's kind of novel, but we do have some experience in doing that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, Barbara, we talked yesterday about the number of open positions that you carried last year and the resulting salary savings for that. Would it be valuable for the board to consider putting you into that public safety element that we talked about with the sheriff this morning? And that is those salary savings could be rolled over into a separate fund for public safety and be sure that the district attorney's office is included in that discussion so that we don't lose track of having that buffer? It's desperately important that we maintain some type of a contingency buffer in your, in the public safety departments, more so than probably anybody else. So I'm just simply asking the board to consider adding her staff or her budget into that discussion.
If I recall correctly, I think Captain Macedo addressed that and said it depends. And so that would be my man, my answer as well, that it depends. It would depend on what it looks like. It really depends on what it looks like. It really does. And the other thing-
Reel it in, Catherine.
It's, hopefully you don't think this is off-topic, but, you know, I believe that the public defender budget is included in public safety. And I just personally, I don't think it belongs there. The public defender, the indigent defense is not public safety. Indigent defense is indigent defense. And, you know, the public defenders do a, do an important service. Defense attorneys do an incredibly important service. It's a service for all of us. It's a constitutional right. But their job is to zealously defend their client. Their job is not to protect the public. And so I would quibble with that being in the public safety corridor. The other, the other thing is, their budget is treated so differently from ours. If you're not aware, the indigent defense, they, they pretty much have a blank check that the county has to cash for, for experts, whereas I have to live within my budget. So I kind of just wanna throw that out there. So if you are going down that road, I would definitely quibble with them being included.
Okay. I just tossed it out for discussion.
I didn't want to forget to share a couple of numbers with you. From the time that we had a part-time deputy DA housed with the sheriff's office at the Hubbardie Building, our search warrants, and these aren't necessarily all sheriff's office search warrants. This is the number we got from the court who, who assigned the search warrants. In 2011, it was 52, and then 2012 jumped down to 101, and then 116. For, 2014, it went down to 99, and then 2015 to 72. 2016 was 109. 2017, it went up to 145, and we are already up to over 50 so far this year, and this is before marijuana season. So when we talk about search warrant review, it's a very, very important service, and sometimes it is extremely time-consuming depending on the facts and changes in the law.
Once again, with that increase in numbers, and believe me, I think we can attribute that to the cannabis situation for the search warrants. I, I think we should staff this position with a realization that let's not set it up for failure. Let's, let's get it staffed the way it should be, for what that's worth.
And I did have some answers to your questions that you left lingering yesterday. If you want me to address those now or after?
Which one of us?
I had some questions on the agencies that have an embedded DA.
Oh, I answered that this morning, the one I, okay. But you also asked about which agencies were involved in Operation Terminus. This is from the sheriff's office press release. It was Fish and Wildlife, National Guard, Counter Drug Task Force, State Water Board, Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, CHP, Cal Fire, and of course, the sheriff's office and my office. For a drill down on who was on the counter drug task force, you'd probably have to ask Josh, Josh Crabtree for the sheriff's office. As far as I'm aware, I did not receive any requests to, for any other jurisdiction to take jurisdiction. So I, I'm not aware of the AG's office or the feds taking any of the cases. They would have asked me first. Fish and Wildlife did take one case administratively, and we are working with them on that. But, you know, for any criminal prosecutions, they would be coming to my office to request charges, not-
So the best of your knowledge, your office is handling the prosecution-
Yes.
-on that issue, on that particular case, for all those agencies other than Fish and Game and the administrative?
They, yes, Fish and Wildlife took one case administratively, but we, it's not over yet.
I understand.
And I want to let you know that for all of the urgency ordinance case referrals, starting whatever, a couple of years ago with the airport bust, we have filed every single case that was referred to us. We have 15 misdemeanors, 24 felonies. That includes, I think, 37 urgency ordinance cases. We do have a handful of cases that we are still waiting for reports on, and that's because of all the other agencies involved. It's been quite cumbersome making sure that we have all of the reports. So there's a handful that we are still pending, you know, because we're waiting for these reports to trickle in. In addition, we have probably, I think, 15 that CDAA has handled for us, and that would be civilly.
How many, how many assistant DAs do you have assigned to those, to that case? Is it one?
Those cases are handled by whoever is going to court that day.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
The cases are handled by whoever is going to court that day.
Okay.
It's not a vertical assignment. I don't have the luxury of vertically assigning a prosecutor to-
Do you have more than one assistant DA handling that case? Or those cases from all the agencies so far?
Okay. So when we decide to file a case, it goes to court, and whatever deputy DA is going to court that day would handle that case. So it depends on when it gets calendared.
I understand the calendar.
So that's, okay.
What would it take, and I really don't want to beat this up, I think we're getting on, but it is on a budget, and we're talking about budgets.
Sure.
Your case preparation, your charging, all the way through that process, that wasn't done by one person on that, on the Terminus project, right?
No. So CDAs reviewing some of them, some, it depended, if there was an arrest, for instance, if the person was in custody, it was who I had available. Because we have 48 hours to charge them. So if they were still in custody, it was who I had available. It's gonna depend on how many cases come in. Yeah, I can't tell you, since I'm standing here, which of my deputies charged which cases. You know, it'd depend on the day, it'd depend on, you know, workload, it depends, when we got the report. You know, we only have 48 hours that we have to charge them, so-
That's correct.
And sometimes those reports aren't ready. They're being prepared, and so it takes a while. Sometimes we might even take a verbal on a report. And so as these reports are trickling in, it's gonna depend on when they come in and how we package them up, and then, and then who's gonna, who's gonna review them. It's, for these, definitely would be one of my higher level of attorneys who would be reviewing them. Now ideally, it would be the person, if, if we had a vertical model, whoever was working with the deputies, helped them through the search warrant, went out to the scene, you know, because if you're there personally, it's a lot better than just trying to read it afterwards, and was, and was very up on the issue. That person would be charging it and then going to court. That's the best model. I don't have a luxury of that, but that's what we would like to do.
Supervisor Garimendi?
Yeah, I was warned at St. Thomas Aquinas that I could never get in a Bible-thumping contest with a nun, and I will not try to guess what you know about the rights and stuff. But I would argue about public safety and public defenders, that public defenders are a function of public safety, as guaranteed by our government. It's not all public safety. It's a diverse topic. But what I wanted to suggest was that the board really take a look at these as two district attorney positions. And I think that we talked about at the beginning of this meeting, making sure that we took a long view approach to what the future is going to be. We're concerned about our revenues versus expenditures regarding Measure C money, and that we just deal with the reality. And I think that, you know, if we tied it directly, if we tied one of these DAs, the district attorney is independently elected. We do her budget. She does her job and determines how she's going to spend her budget. But I would be concerned if we just classified one of these DAs as a cannabis because when that money's gone next year, you know, I don't want to have to reclassify. You do your job with the resources. We give you the resources, you do your job. So while I think it's, it's probably needed, it's a good pitch, but I think we really just need to look at them as two district attorneys needed to accomplish the work that you need to have accomplished. And then just because, you'll, by the time you hire this person on board, we're gonna be partially through the fiscal year. And I don't want to be six months on the job and Met Team's gone and, you know, they said, well, I came here to be a cannabis person, and you have me doing murders. So I just hope we think about it in those terms.
Any other comments or questions?
I, I do have a question to CAO, and I'm looking at the line item 5400, salary adds and deletes.
Yes.
And under her request, she has an add of 271, 616 in salaries, and you have nothing. Can you explain what's going on there?
Yeah, and this goes back to, and I had explained this earlier as well. The methodology that we did this year was, when the department requested their budget, any positions that they were adding or deleting, we asked that they be placed on this line rather than populate all of the salary lines. We didn't want departments populating any of the salary lines because we wanted the personnel cost forecasting numbers to continue to match. Once it was determined and we reviewed which positions were gonna be approved, then the, the components of that were then populated into these, the normal personnel lines to reflect what we were approving, or if they were denied, it was simply taken out of this line and reflected in the narrative. So that, that's where the difference between what a department submitted and what was remaining.
So I'd like to poll the board on the DA's budget as proposed by the CAO.
This is, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. This is in addition to what we talked about as far as building funds, correct? That's not in here. We're just sending that money aside, Teeter, or is that in there?
No, that's not in there.
Yeah, this is not in here. That would be handled through the capital improvement project budgets.
Okay. Just know that obviously there's plenty of support for the DA. Get me in the building.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yeah, I'm for, I mean, she's a user for one of her district attorneys, what she wants. I agree with her. Someone comes in for a murder case, you know, she's a habit to do that too. I don't think it's locked in just cannabis.
Supervisor Mills?
And I'm seeing that Measure C money is not all going away next year, so there will be some options that we can play out, so I would approve this budget.
Supervisor Olivera?
Can I ask for a clarification point? The budget there does include two district attorney attorneys. I just want to make sure that that's what you were approving.
Yes, it does.
About the district attorneys?
The one that's a swap-out, budget-neutral, and then the extra-
The one administrator's going away.
The new one.
And then the two-
So it's a net, net gain of two, right? One.
It's a net gain of two attorneys plus one investigative assistant. So two positions plus a reclass.
Reclass.
A reclass, that's right.
Supervisor Olivera?
Your vote to the center, vote with that. You know, I support law enforcement and district attorneys. And I'm gonna give you the opportunity, and hopefully this works, but I have reservations. I think it's understaffed, but let's try it.
Supervisor Garimendi?
You know, I'm supporting the building. I'd certainly support at least one of these deputy DAs. But I think that we are being, we're being overly optimistic about the future. And I think that we have to, I think we'd be, we're being fiscally prudent by adding expensive headcounts to our budget. I'm not quite sure where Supervisor Mills is seeing next year's Measure C dollars, but that'd be exciting to know because I'd like to find him. I'm, I'm afraid I can't support both DAs. I can certainly support one. I just think that I don't want to have to lay off one of your DAs six months after we hire them, which is a possibility.
And I'm gonna support that also. I think I would support one reclassification and one deputy bring on, and maybe we can revisit, we get to mid-year and see where we're at and see what revenues are coming in. But I would be in support of Supervisor Garimendi. So we have three in favor of the recommended CAO budget, and two with one deputy and one reassignment. So gives you direction. Okay, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Moving on to, let's do IT. I see they're up around 207,000.
I was gonna suggest they would be a good next choice.
You wanna take a break now?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we take a 10, 15-minute break, and then we'll go, and Stan, you're up. All right, we are back from break, and we are going into information, information technology. But I want to make an announcement before we do. This will be the last one we will be doing today, I think. We're gonna be cutting off at no later than 4:30. I don't know how long this is gonna take. If we tackle on to another one, I told staff that we'll be leaving at 4:30, and we'll be coming back in tomorrow at 9 o'clock. Okay? It was a long day yesterday for staff, and department heads have been here for two days. So we're gonna cut it off at 4:30 and then resume tomorrow at 9:00. Okay, so moving on. Stan, you're up.
Good afternoon, board. Thank you for the opportunity to address questions that, that you may have from, from what was submitted from the IT budget. So I, you've had a chance to look at the numbers, and, and I think that I can address questions that you have. A lot of the answers that I believe that I will have for questions, if you've got the full budget book, would be in my narrative, starting on page 332, for anyone that has that. But I would be happy to address questions that you may have based on the numbers as presented.
And I would add in there, just adding to what Stan has indicated. So with the IT budget and what the CAO's recommended here includes is one position which is a network technician type of position.
So I can address that if you want.
Yeah, if you want to talk about network technician, just to explain that.
Sure. So within, within the, within the IT organization, currently we have 13 positions within IT that are funded, two more within GIS. But in IT itself, there's 13 positions that are funded. One of those positions is open. That is for a security analyst that, that we have not been able to bring on. And then another one is for something called a network specialist two. We have an extra hire that has been working in that network specialist. So 13 positions in IT, 11 of which are currently filled with permanent staff, one position being filled with an extra hire, one that is open. The request that we have and the numbers that we have here include taking one of the network specialist positions. Well, we're going, we're going to create a new series that is called an IT support technician. It is at a slightly lower level than those network specialist. It's going to be a first line of defense for support requests that come up, day-to-day support requests, and ordering computers and phones and printers and, and putting those in place. But then taking a lot of the phone calls and addressing support tickets from the first level. And that, that should free up more of the time from the higher-level network people. So we take an existing position that's a network specialist, make it a support tech. We have asked to add a second person in that, in that support tech, so we would have two people doing that first level of support. Part of the funding for that then becomes this security analyst position that is still a very important position, but we have not been able to land somebody there. a very important position, but we have not been able to land somebody there. So, I would like to leave that on the books, but not fund it for this year until we are at a point where we can make that investment. So, the end result of all of this is, we will still have 13 positions in I T that are funded. We would add a position to 14th, but we're going to fund 13 of them in this budget. So, we keep the same number of, of positions, but we move them around a little bit in terms of the roles and responsibilities to provide the best support that we can for the county. Questions on that with the staffing?
Supervisor Mills?
Stan, security analyst is a very technical position, as you know. Is it possible that the pay rate just isn't sufficient to attract?
We, and, and I believe Judy is still here. She can, she can participate in this as well, obviously. We, we, we had the position open for several months. We had two candidates that we thought had any possibility at all. One of them that we were very, very keen on. We, we thought this is, this is really quite extraordinary, that in Little Calaveras County, we're going to be able to get someone with these skills. Extended an offer, made it through background check, and he's from out of state, but he has a home in the county. So, so this was, this was really good fortune. And then, and then he was no longer interested in the job by the time he had cleared background and, and was, was able to come. So, I do have concerns with the, it's common, we've heard it in other areas as well. It's a combination of the salary. It's, it's a very, very hot position throughout the state. This could be a difficult position to fill at a higher salary as well. I have some questions on when we will be able, whether we could fill it at the salary level we're at. Judy and I have been discussing maybe tweaking that a little bit and turning that into a series as well, and so that we could, could perhaps bring in someone who does not have quite the level of, and this is a new conversation, so I have not had a chance to talk to C A O about it. But, but looking at another way to get someone in the door, but that's not in the budget for right now. So, I think it's a very fair question, though. It's, and it's not unlike what you've seen in other parts of the county.
I don't know, Judy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just to back up what Stan said, is that, you know, we did a very saturated recruitment. We thought we found a great candidate, but unfortunately, we lost that candidate. And it is a very difficult position to recruit into, due to all of the hackings that are going on, all of the ransoms, all of that. It is, it's a hot-ticket position. And so, we are unable to bring somebody in at the salary that we, we would like to pay, so, or we just, we just can't. So, we've, in talking with Stan, I think that we could build either, build a position that would allow internal growth, or bringing somebody in from the outside, and then once, you know, and to help them grow into that position. I think that's something that we could be successful for in the future. Something I would like to add in also, I gave the Board earlier the vacant, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we do have those up here.
Supervisor Olivera, your lights on. You have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stan, thank you for coming over. Stan, do we have a large turnover in our I T department? Are, are current employees, or they've been with us for a while?
You know, we, for the last several years, we have been fortunate that we have had a, a limited amount of turnover. I, I, I'm not going to say that we are, that we are immune. Some of the staff that, that we've got, that have now been here for several years, they've learned a lot in the time that they, that they have been here. So, I, I think that we are, we have the same challenges, or will have the same challenges, with making sure that we are giving our staff the opportunity to grow professionally, and then paying them at a competitive wage for, for what they could, could see in the area. And, and that's, that's a county-wide challenge. I, I think that we, we will face those same challenges that other departments have, have talked to you about. And, and so, we've talked with H R, with C A O, about, about doing some things differently. You've heard Judy talking about doing career laddering. So, we are looking at making some changes over time, so that we, so that we, we can put together career ladders, so that we can show that career progression to our staff, that they do have a place to go with their careers. And, and then, I think all departments are looking at doing things to make sure that, that wages are as competitive as, as can be done for the county.
Okay, thank you. So, this, this internet security analyst expert, if you will, I know it's not included in the budget, you just mentioned this.
Yes.
Is this something that we're currently working on, that we can be looking at before final adoption? Because what you're, what you're telling us, the compensation package is inadequate to draw the talent that we need. Is that correct?
For the position that we've got, as it is in place, I believe that there will be compensation issues, yes. And that's, and that's what Judy was just talking about.
Right.
In terms of how could we do something different, so that we could get someone in to be focused on the security side? And it's, yes, there, there will be more work that we can do to come back at final.
Well, if I could jump in there, I mean, at this point, I have not asked H R specifically to go back and revisit this position for the point that, at this point, it was not being funded for this year, given other, you know, priorities or concerns. There's the possibility of trying to look at, we have a contract right now for some consulting, that that person could potentially, you know, offset, but it's not a dollar-for-dollar offset. It would still be additional above and beyond cost. It is an expensive position. It's necessary at some point, but my estimation is that we still wouldn't have funding to, to come back and revisit it at final budget.
And by, by bringing in this support tech, obviously, a different discipline, doing, doing a different job, it's not that we would ask them to do the, the, the security level. But I feel confident that we can bring in good talent at that level. That frees up other staff to take on, to be doing less of the day-to-day support level. We can leverage that staff to a certain extent, to be looking at more of the security. The, the other staff looks at security every day anyway, but they can, they can have additional time to be working with security-related tasks.
Thank you, Stan.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Stan, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Looking at your budget on total revenue.
Yes.
During last year's budget, actually, this year's budget, I know we're talking about the future budget, and we're still in 1718 budget. You, you had 1.03 million forecasted for total revenue.
Yes, sir.
And as of the date of this printing, you're at 764. And looking at those numbers going forward into the coming year that we're discussing now, there's an increase of over 100,000 in income.
Yes, there is.
So, reflecting back to the 764 you're at, which equals about three-quarters of what was forecast, is there, we're like two and a half weeks left here in this year. Is there outstanding invoices you're looking to have paid? Is your income coming in that you're looking to make up the difference in the next two and a half weeks? Or are we going to have to go into next year to recover some of those funds?
What I would say in looking at that too, and I looked over at Kathy as well, the, the two items where he's down on county reimbursement and A87, those types of activities typically post either quarterly or twice annually, I'm not certain in the case of the county.
We have posted A87, that's a monthly.
Oh, okay.
And that will have been occurring after this was created, so.
And that, that will tie out to what, that will tie out to what we budgeted originally on the A87.
It will bring up to that.
The A87 always comes up to, to what was originally budgeted.
What was originally?
Yes.
So, it, it is the county reimbursement that is lower, which I would expect, again, those don't always post on a monthly basis. We would, ideally, they would be quicker. Do we know, Stan, from experience this year on reimbursement for, from other programs, whether you weren't doing as much activity as you anticipated?
We're doing a little bit less activity than, than what we had planned, but we will, we will catch up a lot of that. Our, our revenues are internal, whether it's A87, there's billing that we do to other depart, to non-general fund areas. And, and so, our, our work with H H S A billing is, is a big piece of our revenue, but then we bill out to a couple of other departments as well. I don't know that we will completely catch up with that, but we will, but we are sending out invoices now for services. We, we will catch up with a lot of that. In looking at the revenue for next year, I believe that we have, that we have solid numbers in place. And, and with, with A87, and then there is, once again, there's significant billing for staff time with Health and Human Services. That's about $180,000.
I think if I could add to that, Stan, because I just scrolled down to your expenses as well.
Sure.
He's also under budget in his expenses. When you look at his net, we budgeted at the 885. He's at 750. Part of that reimbursement was, I believe, for the security analyst.
It was.
And obviously, with not having a security analyst hired, we wouldn't have provided the service to get the reimbursement for. So, that, that would certainly be a, a healthy chunk of that, of that number.
Well, the reason I ask that, as we move on down, and we start getting into line items 5186, 87, 5200, and they're significant higher, higher, significantly higher than the previous years.
Yes, they are.
And so, that would play into a lot, if the general fund's not going to make up the difference for those.
Sure.
On the forecast of your, your income.
Right. Right, whereas, as you saw, our, our impact to the general fund is in excess of $200,000 more than it was in 1718. So, you just brought up the 5186. So, on, so in my, in my budget narrative, I addressed that particular issue. In 1718, everything that was software maintenance or software as a service related went into that 5186. Working with the Auditor's Office for 1819, we split that into two, where there's 5186, which really is more the maintenance software agreements, and then 5200 are the software subscriptions. So, the big hitters in software subscriptions, that software as a service, so that's going to be Open Gov, that's going to be our, our finance one solution. It's some of those. So, we have to look at those two combined, when we're looking at 1819 versus 1718. So, those, those software costs in total are increasing by $121,000, going from 462 to 582, or 583. Within that, within that, we see differences that are Open Gov subscription, that's going to be $105,000 a year. That comes into the I T budget. We have got, so that, that is a big piece of, of that 120. Then there's smaller ones. We are giving great consideration to bringing in a, bringing in software to have a new look and feel for the county website. So, there's $5,000 that would go there for hosting services. Our Laserfish maintenance, which is document management, that's new for the I T budget this year. There's $8,000, an increase in one solution hosting of $4,500. So, so there's, there's four or five line items that combine to make up that $121,000. The bulk of it is in the Open Gov solution at 105.
And then 186 for Sun Guard One solution.
Yes, yes.
I'm looking at line item 5271.
Yes.
And 5272.
Okay.
And significant increases.
Sure.
In both of those.
Yep.
Although, last year is not really significant on line item 5272, because last year's budget, you had $90,000, but year to date, you've only spent 36 of that 90.
So, we, in, in, in the budget last year, it was, we had not taken into account that part of that was going to be reimbursed from the Health and Human Services area. So, there was an adjustment made after final, where we took that 90 down to 60, and we're splitting that cost with Health and Human Services for, for this year.
For this year, bringing that down to 60.
Right, and in the new year, then we're budgeting this in a little bit of a different fashion, where, where our, we're going from, we're taking that down by 30,000 again, so we're going to do $60,000 in our budget for that, for 5272, for, for that same service. And we'll get $30,000 in revenue from H H S A against that $60,000. So, within 5272, the, we went from 90 to 60, and we're going to, we're going to have $60,000 for the professional services, 30 of which will come back in revenue from, from H H S A. That's a shared service. I do want to point out in 5272, something that did not make, that I took out of the budget. It wasn't cut by anyone else. I took it out in order to hit a, the target we were trying to achieve, and that's aerial imagery. We did a, in February of this year, we did a, an update to our aerial imagery, and we're real pleased with the quality. We, we had a goal of doing another aerial imagery in, in the fall. In the past, that has been paid for by the Cannabis Fund. So, anything, including the February one from this year. Anything more that we do with aerial imagery, it's not going to get paid for from the Cannabis Fund. In order to achieve the I T budget goal, I, I set that, I, I took that out of the budget. So, I have, I have let the departments know that have, that have the most interest in that, but, but anything in the fall, at this point, is not in the budget, and I wanted to make sure everyone knew that. 5271 professional services has an increase of $67,000, going from 119 to 187. There is an Open Gov contractual cost when, when the project is completed for $47,000. So, that's placed into the budget. The next, the, the other large one that I, that I would like to educate the Board on is a $27,000 for, it's, it's an I T services company, a, a research company called Infotech, used by some of the other counties in the state as well. One of the services that they provide that I want to take advantage of is doing a workshop with us, with, with different departments, and really working to put together a three-year plan of where we think I T initiatives need to go. How are we doing? What's that plan look like? And, and have something in place that we can use going into subsequent budget sessions that would help to, to frame a little bit better than I can without that, to see what, what we're doing. So, I think that would become a, a real good framework for a long-term strategic plan for I T. And, and then out of that, we would have governance and so on, which is a long-term goal.
Judy, I think that's Stan's water bottle. Okay. It got knocked over, and she, nobody, it's, it was Stan's.
Okay, all right.
I do have one other question before we go on to the other item. The, the Open Gov, is there going to be an ongoing yearly maintenance?
It's, it's not really a maintenance fee, per se. It's software as a service. So, so we, so for that, we are paying, paying for them hosting it.
Mm-hmm.
So, we don't host it here. They provide all the support for that. But then, these services also pay for, for them to be doing upgrades to the product, keeping it fresh, a profit for them as well, obviously. But, but this is, it is an ongoing, that's for everything associated with the services that we will get from Open Gov.
And the cost of that yearly cost, I'm sure is.
105, 105,000.
Be the 105 that you're talking about earlier. But it'll probably be going up.
It, it, it will over time, I believe.
Our negotiated contract, I can't remember how many years it was, didn't have it in.
Was it five years?
I want to say it was five years.
In the next five years, it'll be just, okay. All right.
And we, we took down some of our professional services so that we could, could help keep it as, as close as we could. So we've cut back on some services that we, that we typically lean on from, from external vendors.
I, and you and I didn't really have a lot of in-depth conversation on Infotech. But knowing that that is a $27,000 line item, that is pretty sizable. That if we had to look for areas to make a reduction, that certainly could be something to consider.
That does not, that doesn't keep the lights on today. It helps to make sure we keep them going in the future. But, but for today, that is, you're absolutely right, Tim.
Supervisor Garamendi?
Thank you. Stan, thanks, thank you very much. I think I understand what you're saying here, but I want to make sure, I mean, you've heard my walk, you've been here all day. You've heard my, my mantra of, you know, we have to figure for the out here. So I want to make sure that we are, it looks like a lot of these purchases that we're making, getting OpenGov, all these things set up. And there'll be a recurring cost. So I would expect that there'll be, you're not adding by headcount. And I'm expecting we're putting up the capital to date, and there'll be a lower maintenance to keep things going for the next several years.
And on, and on OpenGov, once again, that 105, that would be a combination of maintenance and, and licensing costs and everything that is bundled into the software cost.
And that's plugged for five years.
At 105, 105 per year.
Right. Because I'm looking at like the software subscriptions and, you know, we're buying that today. And so we've got some runway.
Right.
So keep in mind as we go through that, you know, the future, we need to be able to maintain what we've got going.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, Stan, I know that it's been an ongoing issue and I'm, I'm looking at, I had a line item 5499. It has to do with furniture.
Yes.
Has to do with ergonomics.
Yes.
And I know that's been an issue for your staff.
It has. So, so we, with great help from the, from the Office of Administration, we have addressed a lot of those needs. So I would invite you to come and take a look at that. We, we do, we, we have replaced not the, the full office, but the area that, that people had the, the biggest request for was new desks. And in, in the main area there that, that you've seen, we have replaced all of those desks. There's a few of us. Mine has not been. There's, there's a couple of other areas that we still need to take a look at. But, but we've taken care of a lot of that. We are actually going to be reducing this 16 to a little bit lower number so that it will, so that it will fit the anticipated need because we have taken care of, of, of a lot of them. Now, as we go forward, there may be other areas that we will take a look at depending on the long-term space needs and, and, and where IT is going to land long-term. There may be different things. That would come out of a different budget that we would do to the area that we're in right now. But thank you for asking.
Well, the other concern too is the air-to-air exchange rate.
Yes. And that, I was just exchanging emails with Patrick from, from the buildings area. And, and we have more to do there. He, he did an air quality that I'm very appreciative of, looking for mold and some of those issues. And, and found that we're, we don't have a problem in our building with that. So that was very good news. But there are some things with air exchange that, that may not be able to be solved with a, with, with a quick fix. That may be part of a larger initiative. And Patrick is, is helping us with that. He's very aware of the issue. We've done, we've done some things internally with moving people further up in the room and, and our storage in the back. But it's, it's still a question that we've got.
Do we have an O2 sensor or any way of determining?
The, the test that Patrick did recently wasn't checking the O2. He's going to come back, I believe, and, and check that out to get detailed readings on that as well.
Thank you.
But we were, we were pleased to find out that there isn't a mold issue.
Any other questions? No? Thanks, Stan.
Thank you. Thanks, Morgan.
So is there any suggestions? Well, we need to poll on this particular budget first before we move on as to whether we want to accept what the CAO has put in front of us.
Mr. Chair, I would be in favor of the IT budget as recommended by the CAO.
Supervisor Mills? Supervisor Clapp? Supervisor Garamendi?
Yes.
NAMIS. Thank you, Stan.
Librarian Styer.
Yeah, we can, we can go on to library. It's not a huge increase. Nancy?
I'm happy to do this.
On page 352?
But are we going to have time for public comment?
You want to comment?
No, I'm just saying the public hasn't had their comment. There will be time or not. There is no, oh, until the whole thing is over. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay. I understand. No worries. Happy to answer your questions.
Do we have any board questions? She's not adding anybody. It looks like no additions, no deletions.
Nancy, I do have a question for you. I haven't heard back yet. Had, had you heard anything from the City of Angels Camp hearings in terms of the funding for the library?
Yes. I heard from Melissa Eads, who is the new city manager in Angels Camp. We had a discussion with her. They have been helping us with the rent in our Angels Camp facility, which is a rental facility. She has told me that we are in the budget for the full figure. However, they have not had their budget discussions yet. They were scheduled for June 7th, I believe, and they postponed them till the end of the month. I will be invited to that, and I have been invited to give input in terms of our statistics and so forth and benefit to the community.
That's nice to hear that.
Yes.
We were still in the budget. Because that comes into your, for the board and the public when they're looking. That's your 4799 line?
That's income from Angels Camp, yes. And because we were not able to move to the larger facility as we had hoped, we're staying where we are and doing some renovations to make it as good as we can. Yeah. So that figure will, will stay basically the same. We don't have a current lease that is being worked on. So I don't know if the rate of rent will stay the same. But I will bring that one when I have that information.
I'm looking at line item 4707. Gifts and donations.
Yes.
Normally friends of the libraries, branches.
Yes.
And I'm not seeing anything this year that, other than $1,000.
Yes. And that's because we're doing that differently since they have a special designated fund. If you look in 4721, that's where the friends donations are for this year.
All right. Thank you for pointing that out.
It's still a nice.
Be sure to thank them for being so generous.
I will do that. Yes. We had a meeting today and I'll be reporting to them. They ask if, that I give them what percentage of the total budget that they do give. And it has been large for the past couple of years, and it will be large again this year because of the large donation, anonymous donation that we got in honor of Sally Tuttle. We're still spending that. So we'll have about $20,000 more this year to spend on that.
Like the sheriff's office, you know, when the community's helping support the stuff, it's great.
Yeah, they're phenomenal. And I have, as you know from the Library Week, over 100 volunteers who basically give us five full-time employee numbers of hours. So it's, it's phenomenal. Tremendous support.
Chair, a quick note. Thank you for coming over, Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
A quick note or a quick question. How's your computer equipment? When was the last update?
We have a lovely spreadsheet that IT provided for us. So we're, we're up to date on everything with the, except we still, I'm sorry to say, have a couple of XPs that we use for our online, online catalogs that are just used for that. However, I've just purchased two more and we have a plan in this budget to replace the rest of those. So we'll be up to date on everything.
Looking ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And your high-speed internet, how's it working?
Oh, thank you. Yes. Next week, our IT department will be working with their consultant to mock up everything that they're going to be doing on the insides of our, of the branches and the, the main library, which will receive the broadband, one gigabyte. The AT&amp;T company was supposed to just, to install the circuits in May. They did not. They have now given us the date of the 28th and 29th of June, which takes us very near to the end of the budget period. However, SCLC, the Southern California Library Consortium, which manages the grant, is aware of this and they will give us an extension.
So you're not seeing a challenge to the grant simply because of?
We will not have a challenge. They're fully informed and it will be, it'll be fine.
And will we continue to look for alternatives there in Angels Camp?
The issue.
I heard the sigh.
It's such a conflict in my mind because we want broadband in Angels Camp. We feel that's a very significant community that we have to give better internet to. And so the delivery of that circuit is to a specific address. We are going to go after E-rate FAA money next year for the provider costs. And in order to do that, you have to have a location. So I had to move ahead with the installation of the circuit at 426 North Main. We would certainly entertain a move to a larger site if we, if we could. The problem that we face is if you cross Highway 4 and go down that way, rents go up quite significantly. So we really need to stay at this end of town. And the two sites that we wanted went after, we were not successful in negotiating with them.
I hope we'll, we'll continue to look and that they will be fairly close to where you are. So the cost of moving if necessary isn't burdensome.
Exactly. Yes. If we had gotten the first site that we were really wanting, it would have been a less expensive project there. And it would be fairly simple to do that and to make that change. So if that did someday come about, we would be able to do it. We don't have, you know, I want to offer broadband, but we don't have wonderful children's section and young adult areas in our branch just because of the limitation of space. But we are, we are planning some renovations that will give us as much as we can get there. Yeah.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
My 16-year-old assures me that you've got the fastest internet in this part of the county.
Wait for, wait till next month.
So he'll be very excited.
Bring him on in.
I don't know how much more internet he can take.
It'll blow him out of his. It'll be great.
Spend this whole summer at the library.
Well, at least he'll be air-conditioned.
Welcome, yeah.
Worst things to spend it doing.
Surrounded by books, whatever you want.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you, Nancy. Poll the board on the proposed budget, the CAO, the library. Supervisor Clapp? Yes. Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera? Yes. Supervisor Garamendi?
Yes.
NAMIS. I see the ag commissioners here. Kev, you want to come up? Are you going to speak on behalf of, I guess, your department?
Thank you, sir. Kevin Wright, Commissioner for the Agricultural Department, which is a part of the Environmental Agency. I only, I have five employees. And.
Page 254. Give us a minute here to get caught up. And again, we're going to be, we're going to be ending today's hearing proceedings at around, well, after this because it'd be 4:30.
So confirm, because I just asked Peter to come up. You're okay if he comes back down and we'll do him tomorrow morning?
Yeah, sorry, Peter.
I'm not.
You're off the hook for today. We'll start tomorrow. You'll be first, first one in the morning tomorrow.
Trouble is, I'm not going to be here tomorrow.
No, I'm talking about Peter.
Oh, Peter.
Peter. Peter Rauer.
Good exercise for you, Peter.
We're going to get, we're going to get through you.
I didn't see him behind me.
We're going to get through you today. And I see Brad just came in. So, and then we're going to go on and we'll start with Peter in the morning. And then we'll come back and get Brad with environmental. Okay?
So I just want to give a little narrative about where my, my department is. Last year, I, I had, I have five positions. And I had a cannabis inspector. And one of the, and when I realized that the cannabis funding had a good chance of going away, I had a vacant deputy position, which is a fairly high salary. But I chose to not fill that position because I wanted my cannabis inspector to be employed after cannabis was no longer going to be around. So my plan, which I discussed with my bosses, I told them that I'm not going to fill that position for the deputy. And I'm going to underfill it with my most senior inspector, who was already employed. And that when cannabis left and there was no funding for him, I would want to move my newest inspector into that position. So that's why there's a salary savings there of quite a bit. I still have five employees. But now that I don't have a cannabis inspector, which wasn't considered one of my employees, I'm still got my core people. So, you know, we, we were heavily involved with the cannabis as far as providing them with education and information. And they, they caused us quite a bit of extra, of extra time and labor. So we needed to have, you know, an extra cannabis inspector. But now that that's gone away, we're going to be almost back to normal. But I wanted to give the opportunity to keep the people that I have because the people that I have are good. And they can, they can work their way up in the ranks and in the future. And that way I was just able to preserve what I had. I thought that was more important than to go out and get a deputy and then have to fire him after a year. As far as the rest of it goes, our net county costs are going to be pretty much the same as they were last year because of the salary savings. We are one of the few departments.
Increased a little bit. You went from 188 to 233 for this budget for your county cost. Part of that, we have a capital asset in here. That's, I think, going to be a big chunk of that. If you want to talk about what your capital asset is.
Yeah.
Went from 188 to 2.
Yeah. Do you remember what cap, we were buying a vehicle for you?
Yeah, the vehicle is for, is for insect trapping. Our other one is tremendously old, more than 10 years old, and it's got springs coming up through the seat. We were able to fund that. What we did was our funds for agriculture were increased. And we were using that money to purchase the new truck. So I think this other final budget for 87 was at 188. I think they may have already reduced. I think they may have already reduced, reduced the fact that we didn't have a deputy there. Because if you look at the 2718 actual...
Looks like Brad might have a comment, too. Because I'm noticing a revenue decrease as well.
Expenditure at the bottom of the expenditure one. What happened was, scroll a little bit.
This final budget?
On the expenditures, the...
You want the expenditures or the revenues? These are revenues.
Yeah, because remember that we showed a revenue, and then we showed a negative expenditure, and we thought we took that out.
Right.
We had the understanding it was, but it's still in there.
Yeah, 5632 and 5736. That's where it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
That little cork right there down at the bottom.
It's not in here, though. This is not in my final budget. This has been corrected.
But that's why it makes the, it looked like we were asking for more.
Oh, for last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not actually asking for more.
But your revenues did go down.
Our revenue came down.
Yes.
Yes.
But your actuals...
If you look at our net county, I don't, our net county costs should be, I don't understand why they are actually more than what they were last year. If you look through there, it's just almost everything's the same, so I have no idea why that is more if the 5632 and 5756 aren't influencing that.
I, again, think it goes back to the fact that you're showing here a decrease in your revenues.
That doesn't make sense either, because we should have more revenue.
You're showing you were at, oh, you're right. Never mind, I keep saying that, and it's going the opposite direction.
Going the opposite direction.
Sorry.
However, I do have a question. If you scroll all the way down to the bottom, were we showing net costs? Actual to date or budget? Final budget is 188, 853, but actual dates are 247, 204.
That's why there's something wrong with that final budget. There's something wrong in that calculation.
That's $70,000 over budget.
There's something, I can say there's something wrong in that calculation.
When we did the budget last year, we found that error that 44,000 and 69,000 were shown as revenue, and then again, they were shown as a negative expenditure, so it actually showed a false reading of what the general fund contribution was.
I do recall, I think, and unfortunately, Brian, who's, I think, was out at Integrated Waste today, I remember him bringing this item up when we discussed it.
That's right.
So it's one of those mea culpa's, I think, this year we still have to go to the board about.
No.
Anyway.
So this year's budget is hardly, very much not different from last year's budget. It was just this, this conundrum here where there was a double accounting of revenue last year. Our actual net county costs were the same. And if you look back to 1617...
No, I, like I said, I do remember this issue. Brian had went through it, and I remember correcting that anomaly.
That's right.
Where we did double count that revenue.
So you agree. So we're pretty close to the same budget we had last year.
And the year before.
And the year before. And so, in addition to that, within those numbers, you've been able to, you funded the vehicle.
That's right. And still retained it with the county cost of what we historically have. And that was because, for once in our life, our '87 costs were actually less than what we, what they normally are. Now, usually, we get surprised to the upside. We got surprised to the downside for that.
You use services less, you know.
So, so that was good. There were savings also, like I say, because we don't have a deputy. I have underfunded that.
About half, actually, when you look at...
That's right.
Yeah.
So we have savings there. We also have increased revenue on aid for agriculture of around $40,000. So that anomaly makes us look bad when actually we are looking very good, because everybody is working for me, got their step raises, and all these other little expenses that go up every year. And we still were able to fund for one vehicle.
Very nice. Supervisor Garamendi?
Kevin, I want to commend you and thank you for taking a long-term approach to the budgeting, preserving your staff, nurturing them, and making sure that succession, you really seem to have a good program for a long-term approach, an ag-type approach to running your shop and managing people, and I appreciate you doing that, and I encourage you to continue it.
Well, the only way that I've found to keep your staff happy and whole is to give them opportunity and to hang on to the ones that you have who are good. And the only way you're going to do that is to have a vision of the future for them.
All right, Pat. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Supervisor Mills?
I do have a question on the, revenues are projected to increase substantially due to anticipated SB1 revenue of $44,059, and I was searching for that in the line items to try to figure out where that was landing.
It's in state aid for agriculture. If you notice, the state aid for agriculture went up.
That would be 4452. So that's where it is.
Yeah.
However, if the voters reject SB1 in November, that would have an impact through at least half of the year. Or is that going to be received yet in the first half of the year that you know of?
If the voters reject it, we won't buy the pickup truck.
Okay.
And we'll make any further adjustments that we need to make.
So that's, that is one iffy in the budget right now, then, for you.
It's iffy in anybody's budget who has...
SB1.
Yes, yeah.
So it's iffy in our budget. We've got SB1.
Big iffy. It's a big iffy.
And to that point as well, Kevin, if SB1 is rejected on the pickup truck, we can have an alternative discussion if they're like teeter funds, if the board would want to consider that. Clearly, like you say, if something's at end of life and it's a critical piece of your work, we also need to look at that.
So to that point, do you only have one vehicle?
No, I have two vehicles for trapping, but I have two trapper, two insect trappers that work in the summertime.
The reason I say that is because with the 5182 maintenance equipment auto, we are spending a lot of money maintaining vehicles for you.
Yeah, that's true.
So it really makes, at some point, there is a threshold at which it makes better sense to purchase new and take the savings and maintenance costs over an additional period of time. I mean, with these numbers and running a fleet, I would have got you a new vehicle a couple of years ago. It just makes $12,000 in a year makes no sense for two vehicles.
Well, we have more than that. We have a pickup truck and some other vehicles, too.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, that's a big number.
Yeah.
So.
It's a lot less expensive than finding lights and computers in it. Yeah.
Any other board questions? If not, I'll take you poll. Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the proposed budget? Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Olivera?
Yes.
Garamendi?
Yes.
So am I.
Thank you, Stoss. Appreciate it.
Can you stick around? I need to talk to you first.
Okay.
All right. So that gave you direction on that. Okay, so we're going to recess for the day, this hearing.
Can I start Peter in the morning? Do you want to finish environmental?
Well, I told Peter we'd start with them, and then we'd be going to environmental. So we will be back tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. So we stand adjourned for...
What time tomorrow morning? 9:00.
9:00.
I'll be like 15 minutes late.
Okay.
Diane, we can leave by now, sir.
Yeah, can we leave, sir?
Yes.